Yeah, yeah. The Public Service Announcements.
It is what it is.
It is what it is.
What it do.
What up, dawg?
What up, dawg?
Every morning, man, they fight from money.
See what it will bring. Hear y'all. Because everything. Yahweh loves the first and soul. I guarantee he does everything. So, y'all, right?
Leave people alone. Leave them alone.
Most of these problemers. Like, shout out to them. Because we're dominant. Yahweh strength is greatly marked as. The beginning, because he started. Scriptures written with two ears to listen. Women, men, and children, here is the prescription. Our way of life is not a religion. People in Israel, like, the secret treasure hidden. We were chosen and given a mission. They could read the Torah, but not the Hebrew. Praise Yah. God, the praise Yah. Praise Yah. God, the praise Yah. Praise Yah. Represent. We gotta represent. If you have a strength.
We also represent.
Speaking Yah. Always speaking Yah. Speaking Yah. Always speaking Yah. Yah is great.
We in the L O D.
If you have a strength. We also represent. Trust in Yah. Pray for your spirit. Keep trusting Yah. I guarantee he will be. Remember what he taught you. Never.
All praises to Yahweh. Yeah, and we back. Like I said, this is the pamphlet that I'll be going over. The reason I am doing this live is because of this pamphlet that I'm always giving out. And I say when? Sunday at 1:00. So, you know, I gotta be here. It's 1:30. But I appreciate y'all family for sticking by. And like I said, I just gotta be a man of my word. So, we're gonna be going over the pamphlet that I hand out to everybody. And it really shows the laws. And it's really against the low-life juvenile court with Melissa Powers. What you seeing was my son on each one of those videos. That's the reason I'm fighting. It's a rescue mission, alright? But what I'm doing is showing children services. Because we have a lot of people that believe that, oh, you always talk about the women. You wanna blame it on the women. The women ain't shh. The women is this, the women is that. And in this Father's Rights Movement, this brother you have right here will never dog the women. We're fighting with the women. Because truth be told, the state don't care if you're a woman or a man. They'll come in and steal your child. So, if you don't have a father and it's a single mother, and you ask like to dog single mothers, alright? We know some of them are good, alright? And that's the ones that Children's Services wanna steal. They don't wanna steal the ones that are messed up. They wanna steal the ones that are good through the juvenile court. Now, of course, the juvenile court, they wanna make sure to separate you from your family in order to get funds from the state. They separate a child from their father because they know he has 10 more, 10 times more likely to go to jail with his fatherless, alright? But we all know they put him on child. Let's get to the pamphlet. Alright. Alright, what's in store? Alright. We got the pamphlet here. We gonna check out a couple things in this pamphlet. Very good information. Let's get to it. Alright. Let's move in a little bit. Alright. So, when I'm going door to door talking to people, this is what I'm handing them. Israel for City Council. Yes, I'm running for City Council. Do not believe that I'm running to be a highfalutin suit and tie nigga, alright? The main reason I'm running is because they stole my child, alright? To be 1,000 which. And what I'm gonna do with that position is, instead of begging them in their court, I'm gonna put them in the court of public opinion, alright? I'm dragging them there. So, all of you can see what kinda dirt they do behind closed doors. They wanna keep it behind closed doors. Right here, we see right here. I give them this. Court, child alienation, or pay. Court video footage for all. They never wanna show the video footage of what they, the dirt they do in the juvenile court. And understanding the system, alright? What I'm gonna do very soon is get the link for everyone. And let me do that right now. I'm gonna put that copy. I'm gonna put the link for any of you that wanna chime in, wanna come in to the studio and talk among me and talk with me. Let me put that in here right now. Okay. This is the link to join the discussion. Let me go ahead and put that right there. Alright. So, right there, I put the link in for you to join the discussion. If you wanna click in there and come in here and join what's going on. But I'm about to go in on the juvenile court and Children's Services in specific. This right here is for the women to understand your rights, mostly women, when Children's Services come and try to steal your child away from you. And we know how much low lives those people are, alright? So, let's get back to it. Yeah, I got all the links. My mission provide recreational, cultural, and all these particular things right here. But I myself is on a mission to be reunited with my son Ezra. That's right before our services program. We see that right there. Audiovisual records of the court proceeding. They never wanna give you the audiovisual or the camera footage of the dirt they do. Somebody get shot in the street, but when it come to juvenile court, believe me, they wanna keep everything behind closed doors. But it won't be anymore, alright? Let's go to the next page. This is what I hand people. When they, this is right here is, that's the beginning, right here on the right. That's the back page on the left. That's the complete back of the page. I scan each page, so every time you turn the page, we have something new, alright? This is what I give them on the second page. Right here, the second page, to the left, when you turn the first page, you see right here on the left, child support is bribing the court. This is what I show everyone. They giving the clerk money, they giving the prosecutor money, they giving the juvenile division people, uh, common pleas money to call court. They giving the court a common pleas, that means they giving divorce court money, alright? Child supporters giving domestic relations, that's divorce court. They giving their share of money. And who else they give? The clerk right there, you see the magistrate services. They giving the fake-ass judges money, alright? And right here, this is only the clerk, this is the clerk's contract right here. We got this through the Freedom of Information Act. The Father's Rights Movement there in Kansas. I believe the brother was in Kansas, oh, it was actually, I call him a brother, he was in Kansas, and he got this for me through the Freedom of Information Act. Right here, this is how child support bribes and contracted judges in juvenile court to keep loving parents from their children for profit. Right here, parents guide to the system. Protect your kids with knowledge, alright? Then you turn the page. This is what I show everyone too. This is what I show everyone too. This right here is the table of contents of the things I'll be going through. I will only be going through several of them. I wanna read the one that talks about requesting placement with a relative. I also wanna read the section that talks about, don't sign a safety plan or stipulation. I also wanna read the part where it says, demand a copy of the search warrant, alright? These are things you need to know. And I also, right here, I show people that, if you see to the left, elements to a contract. The offer, the acceptance, the mutual consent, that means the meeting of the minds, meaning we're talking about it. We consider, we consider the contract. And then capacity is like, are they retarded? Are they able? Are they too young to sign a kind of capacity and legality, alright? Meaning, do you have a notary public? Is it, you know what I mean? Let's continue though, right here, it says, nobody can force you into a contract. And we go up. That's why I wanna read this part, don't sign a safety plan or stipulation. Don't sign nothing with Children's Services. Nothing at all. Alright? Don't sign nothing with them. Because you do not know the fine print. The fine print says, we can steal your child with immunity. You have already consented to us taking your child from your ass, alright? Alright. Now, um, let's continue. And let me, uh, let me go ahead and just, alright? We turn the page. Demand a copy of the search warrant. Let's zoom into this a little bit. Let's get into this. Let's get into this right here. Alright, let's read this. Because this is what I do. I go to different people's, um, I go to different people's house, I knock on the door. Maybe after I turn it in to the, uh, to the, uh, to the board over there, um, the voting roll of all the different signatures, then, you know, I may show you a little section, just a section where it talks about all the places I've been. But I go to the projects, I go to the hood, I go to where my people that need this information, I go to them, and I've supplied them with this information, alright? I went to the project, I went to the fay, I went to the tee, alright? Y'all know me, I was on Lynn Street. Some of y'all know this, who got the text message, alright? Who got the email? I've sent this to you. Do not speak with a government agent or allow them to enter your home without a search warrant. Don't let that low life, low, let me, let me go ahead and just, let me do. Okay, let me do this. Okay. That's gonna, okay. Demand a copy of the search warrant. Let's continue. When a government agent, social worker, police officer, etc., come to your door and they're seeking consent to allow them in your home, remain calm and say something like, "I understand your concerns, I'm happy to cooperate. May I see your search warrant, please?" The agent may try to tell you that a search warrant isn't required because you can give voluntary consent, or he may try to make you believe you are required to allow him into your home. The agent might say, "I'm required by law to come in your home and investigate." It is true that agent is required to make an investigation, which may include entering your home. However, this does not give the agent authority to ignore the law. If the agent needs to enter your home as a part of the investigation, he needs to obtain a search warrant. He need, that's what they need to do. Don't even open the door. Don't even open the door for them to put their foot in the motherfucking, don't open it, get a search warrant. Start recording. You need a search warrant. Let's continue though. Remember, that agent is the one asking you to circumvent the law. You're acting within the law, and he is asking you to ignore the law. Skip procedure and do things his way. Don't do things their way. If they don't have a search warrant signed by a judge, then don't, then don't deal with it. Don't be intimidated. Keep a proper perspective of the situation. You are willing to cooperate with, within the law. You willing to cooperate within the law. You trying to cooperate, we wanna do it the lawful way. We don't want you to go outside the law. Mister, uh, policeman, uh, mister, mister, social worker that wanna steal my child, don't go around the law. The law dictates that a search warrant is required before entering a private home. Your position should be, this is what your position should be, let's go. I want to cooperate. What does it say? I want to cooperate. Do not wanna ignore proper procedure. Why would you circumvent clearly established laws and procedures? Why would you do that? Why? Why? Because you wanna make a profit off my kids? Because when you get my kid in the system, you get a bonus? Because you're working for a for-profit industry? Mrs., uh, C P A, Child Protective Services? Two-for-one kids worker? Really? Somebody called Two-for-One Kids? Okay. Good. What evidence do you have? Well, give it to the judge so you can come in this house. You cannot come in this house because somebody called you, alright? That's not how the law works, Ms. C P A. Let's continue. I do not wanna ignore proper procedure. Why would you wanna circumvent clearly established laws and procedure? Why would you wanna do that? Do not allow the agent to peer inside your home or view your children. Do not answer any questions without seeing a search warrant and verifying its authenticity. Even minor questions such as your date of birth, name, number, and children, etc., should be, should not be answered without seeing a search warrant. And not only see the search warrant, take a picture of that mug. Because them low-life motherfuckers may fake a judge's signature. Them low-life motherfuckers, okay? Let's continue though. Gain an entry by threat or intimidation. It is unlawful for an agent to coerce entry into your home by threatening or intimidating you. And that's what they do all the time. That's what they do all the time. Federal courts are increasingly finding for parents who sue state agents for coerced entry. They sue these motherfuckers. But see, you don't know. You're ignorant to it. That's why I come around and give everybody this. Stop playing. Where is it at? What page we on? This page? That's why I give everybody this. Sue they asses, alright? The Ninth Circuit recently ruled, any government official can be held to know that their office does not give them the unrestricted right to enter people's home at will. It is settled constitutional law that police should not enter a dwelling without a warrant, even under statutory authority, where probable cause exists. The principle that government officials cannot coerce entry into people's houses without a search warrant is so well-established that any reasonable officer would know it. Any reasonable motherfucker, these, well, we know some of these motherfuckers are not reasonable. They're not. They're not. Alright. Appeals claim that a search warrant is not required for a home investigatory visit by social workers is simply not the law. So, if any of these low-life motherfuckers say that, they can come to your house without a warrant? No, not this private home. Stupid. So, you become a police officer, you can just walk in anybody's home now that you a police officer, motherfucker? And you ain't even graduate? What the fuck? Let me continue. In the above case, a social worker and a police officer coerce entry into, let's, miss the next page, let's go to the next page. Okay. Into this lady's home by threatening to break down the door. Even though the mother ultimately opened the door and allowed them to enter, she did so by coercion, which is unlawful. Thus, the agent will have response personally liable and hold they asses liable, alright? We recommend that you print the highlights of this case and other warrantless entries, cases, to hand to the government agent who attempts to coerce entry into your home. You may find these cases on the website at cpswatch.com/caselaw. Or you can call our office to have them mailed to you, alright? And we got that, we got that information at the end, you can call them too. Evidence required to obtain a search warrant. This is what they need to actually get in your house. This is what they need. Evidence required to obtain a search warrant. Alright? In order to get a search warrant, an agent needs some sort of evidence. It cannot be anonymous phone call or allegations without any support ever. It can't just be somebody calling Two-for-One Kids. That don't mean your ass can come in my house. Remember that, y'all. This is why I walk around and get these to people. Remember this. Even when the agent has enough evidence to obtain a search warrant, he is restricted to looking for specific things listed on the warrant. As an example, the warrant may give the agent authority to interview one of your children. This wouldn't allow him to interview siblings or look through your home. It also wouldn't require you to answer any questions. So, what does that mean? He may have enough evidence to talk to one, one of your babies, but not all of them. The search warrant just say one of them. And it also don't say you can come in my house. And it also say, I ain't gotta say nothing to your ass. It's say you can talk to this baby, and that's it. That's it. But these low-life, you gotta know your rights. You gotta know. Because these low-life motherfuckers will tell you anything. They are banking on you being ignorant, alright? Agents typically do not seek warrants because they do not have enough evidence to obtain one. They, so they really can't even go in your house anyway. Most of the time, the vast majority of the time, they don't have enough evidence to go in your house. They just banking on you being ignorant. They're hoping you are ignorant. Or B, they don't wish to be restricted in their investigations. That means they don't wanna get a search warrant, because then, when you get a search warrant, not only thing you can do is talk to the key. You can't talk to anybody. You don't wanna be restricted, so you hoping they just ignorant, just tell you anything, just let, open everything, fight. This constitutional protection was put in place to protect families against unwarranted governmental intrusion into their private lives, okay? This is why America is supposed to be great, because we ain't supposed to allow this type of government intervention. And these people ain't even part of the government. They work with the government. These low-life CPS workers, they not even part of the government. Now, when we talk about police, maybe, yes, but not these low-life motherfuckers, uh, that's, uh, the children's service worker. Don't waive it. When properly used, don't waive your rights. When properly used, this protection is adequate to protect innocent families, but will not serve to conceal genuine child abuse. It won't, because they have enough evidence to get a warrant. Questioning children at school. While families are safe from warrantless governmental intrusion in their private home, most states require that school and daycare personnel allow state agents access to children without informing the parents either before or after contact is made. So, you sending them to school, and the agent say, you know what? We can't get, we can't get the kids at her house, because they too smart for that. So, we gonna go to the school and ask the kid, intimidate the little ass kid, he gonna tell me anything. We gonna use a little mind, because we manipulating kids over here with CPS, trying to steal their asses and see what they say. A way to overcome this is to teach your children to exercise their right. Their right to what? To have their parent present before answering any questions. The easiest way to do this is by making up a laminated card and instructing the child to hand it to government agencies. A sample card might look like this. Notice to government agent, you are hereby informed that I have the right to have my parents present prior to answering any questions. I am now exercising that right and request that you contact my parents immediately. Just do that. Stop being a low-life and do that. The back of the card should have the child's name, parent's name, and contact information. Several numbers should be listed, homework pager, and an extra emergency number, whatever. Give them the, give them the email. Home and work addresses should be given as well. More contact information, the better. This will eliminate the possibility of agent claiming he didn't know how to reach you. By utilizing the written card, the child needs only handed to the agent rather than memorizing what to say. Since this is written, the agent can't say the child didn't properly exert his right to have his parent present prior to any question. You may be asking, how do I explain to my child what a government agent is? How do I explain to this little child who these people trying to steal him and put him with, with a family that's more, that's more likely to abuse him? We know how, we know how this CPS, when these motherfuckers fuck people's lives up. Alright? I don't care who's arguing that, because I talked to too many of them. Most of us teach our children not to talk to strangers. Government agents are strangers. It's okay to tell your child not to talk to any adult unless you have given permission. That's okay, and that's, and that's sound reason. The reason we teach our children not to talk to strangers is because we don't know what their motives are. They may be seeking to harm them. This couldn't be more true with government agents. We don't know their motives, and we can't presume they are pure because the child welfare system has irreputably harmed many children in the past. Many, 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 many children and parents fucked them up. Take their child, they on drugs now, they drinking, they, they don't know what to do. Alright? I talked to them, I talked to them parents, that's why I'm on here now. Because I said I'll be on here for them, whether they here or not. Maybe they can see this later. But I gave them this pamphlet, and I'm gonna go over some of it today, some of it next Sunday, and the rest next Sunday. I'm gonna be dealing with Children's Services and the women on the Sunday, alright? Because children sometimes can't tell the difference, right? Between government agents and regular people. It's a good idea to teach children about the types of question they should answer rather than the types of people they shouldn't talk to. Basically, no person should be asking about things that happen at the house. Don't nobody, if anybody asks them things that happen at the house, you tell them to talk to me, alright? Okay, let's continue. Or what they eat, or who they associate with, who visits, what type of discipline is used. If an adult had a legitimate need to know these things, he should talk to the parent and not the child. But like I said, these low-life motherfuckers is talking to children, alright? Evasive surveys. Public and private schools are increasingly requiring children to participate in group surveys that intrude to have intrusive questions about private home. These surveys are often a fishing expedition to find indicators of abuse. The so-called indicators aren't what you expect them to be. Low income, no telephone, resident outside the city limits, more than three children, use of corporal punishment or grounding. Both parents working, single parents, religious practices, and other common things are seen as indicators of abuse. They wanna find abuse. They wanna find a reason to take the child. Is it religious practice? By law, children, okay, yeah, right here, as indicators of abuse, could generate a report to child welfare agency. By law, children may be excluded from these invasive surveys if the parents have a hatch letter on file with the school. A sample letter under the Hatch Amendment is on the following page. So, I'm gonna show that real quick. The Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment to the General Education Provision Act, which become effective November 12, 1984, 1981, allows students to exclude their children from basically anything that isn't writing, reading, or arithmetic. The Hatch Amendment provides a procedure for filing complaints with the U.S. Department of Education and then withholding of federal funds for those in violation. So, they gonna withhold federal funds if you violate this. You gotta know your hatch letter. Let's look at the hatch letter. This is right here is an example. Right here, all you gotta do, I can give you this. You copy and paste it. All you gotta do, boom. Where it say dear, put your name. Where it say parents, uh, put your name right there. And they got all these particular things right there. You sign it, date it, give it to their monkey asses, alright? Just change it up. I'm the parent of, it talks about, the U.S. Legislation and Federal Court Decision. Parents have a primary responsibility for their children's education, and pupils have a certain rights which the school may not deny. Parents have a right to be assured that their children's belief and moral values are not undermined by the school. Pupils have a right to have and hold their values and moral standards without direct or indirect manipulation from schools through the curricula, textbook, audiovisual material, or supplemental assignments. This right here is, they talk about critical race theory. This right there will help you out. It's like, hey, this one here say, I hereby request, under the Hatch Amendment, I hereby request that my child not be involved in any school activities or materials listed unless I have a first. That my child not be involved in any school activities or materials listed unless I have first reviewed all the relevant materials and have given written consent from these, all these right here. Psychological psychiatric treatment that is designed to affect the behavior, emotional or attitude, new characteristics of an individual designed illicit information about attitudes, habits, traits, opinions, beliefs. Of individual group. Right here, what does it say on here? Educating in human sexuality. What does it say right there? Including premarital sex. Y'all see that down there? Contraceptive, abortion, homosexuality, group sex. It's all the different things. We don't, the purpose of this letter is to preserve my child's right under protection of pupil rights. This right here is just one of the things. Let's, let's, let's scroll back up. Let's scroll back up real quick. Let me get this. Let's scroll all the way back up real quick. This right here is one of the things under forms and letters. What do we see here? The Hatch Letter. Right here, we got notice to government agents. We got all these different forms. Like you talk about the Freedom of Information, that that's the best, that right there is so powerful because even Dr. Fauci got his emails taken, you know, the, the little. And now he got exposed. That's why everybody took off their mask. He got exposed. For, uh, giving money to the same laboratory that made the damn coronavirus. And he got, they got that information through the Freedom of Information Act. All right, let's go to page twelve real quick. Okay, let me see. Yeah. Right here, this is simple, uh, a simple template. All you gotta do, I'm requesting under Freedom of Information, I request a copy of your agency's policies, policies and procedural manual regarding child abuse investigation and foster care. Get they shit. Get they manual because they never go by the book. But don't worry about it. We gonna get they manual sooner than later. And we gonna put it out there for them low life motherfuckers. Okay. But we got all these different things. All right. Check it out. Now, what did I say I wanted to go to too? Request placement with a relative. We gonna go to page twenty-nine. Request placement with a relative. Let's zoom in. The state gets more money for placing children in foster care than they do for placing them with relatives. That's why they do not want to tell you, you have a right to give them to a relative. Them low life as children's services people rather give more money for their, not for their business, their for-profit business. It, it is a for-profit business and it's ran by individuals, not ran by the government. You can go to, you can go to the Secretary of State website and I'm gonna do that for y'all. Live and show you who owns children's services in this area. It's a person. It's not the government. So they're getting a profit. This person is making bank. And they want to make more bank when they take, put your child, child in foster care. They don't want to give them to a relative. They don't make that much money. Thus, they're reluctant to place with relatives. And when they do, they often require a relative to become a licensed foster care provider. So the agency can get federal money. But listen, you don't have to, only, only way they can require you to do that is if you sign something with them. If not, you go to, if you take it to trial, you can get them with a relative without a problem. It's only when you sign something with they ass that they got some type of jurisdiction to make these decisions. Fuck these, they don't have nothing. And you don't sign nothing. You don't consent with them. They have nothing. Take them to trial. Relative placement shouldn't be confused with relative foster care. A relative foster home is just like any foster home. Except the caregiver happens to be a relative. They are bound by all the same restrictions as other foster homes. An agency can remove the children at any time without ju- just cost. And they could be from a foster home that wasn't a relative. I mean, I'm sorry, as if they were in a foster home that wasn't a relative. They can do the same thing. But a foster caregiver does not have the right to have a child placed in their home. And they are not interested parties in the court case. So do not, just give them to a relative. Don't relatives do not have to do all that foster care stuff, but they can take them at any time. With a relative placement, however, the agency doesn't license the relative as foster caregivers. The relatives are bound by the restriction of foster home. A child placed under these circumstances couldn't be removed from a home without cause. It's as simple as that. Federal law requires that relatives be given preference for placement. The federal law, they get preference, but people don't know it. Believe me. So many, oh, they took my child, he in the system. They in the sys- they supposed to be with a relative. They don't tell them that. These low life never tell them that. That's why I'm running. I'm running for council. We want a place where people are gonna tell them that. Believe me. You know what I'm saying? Donate to the cause if you don't want to. It's cool. But there nobody fighting for this. Why is people so scared to fight for this? Why? Federal law requires that relatives be given preference for placement. The law doesn't allow the agency to impose restriction on relative placement. Such as foster care training or home study. Although most states require a background screen to be cer- to be certain the relative doesn't have prior record of child abuse. Placement with relatives should be immediate and without delay. Grandparents have the option of gaining interest, interested parties by filing. Let's continue. Okay, let's go. A motion to intervene with the court. A motion to intervene, the grandparents can force placement with the agents when the agency refuses. Just do a motion real quick. What the fuck is y'all doing? And we, 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 we're grandparents and y'all low life motherfuckers want to put them with some old purple hair? You know what I'm saying? LGBT married ass couple doing all types of shit. Let's not say that. But we, but it's always better to put them with the relative. All right. Motion to intervene gives a, a grandparent legal standing as a party to the case. This allows them to make motions to the court. And to have the court hear their side before any decision is made. They could write the court reports at each hearing to get, to give the court their version of what, what transpired as well as make recommendation about what should be done in the future. Okay, this right here talking about the, the, the federal law does not require, so, so when you have a, a adversarial, and you can read that and pause, you have an adversarial, um. Relative trying to get it, it don't work the same. They gotta be relative that you cool with. That's pretty much all that's saying. Let's continue. Assert your parental rights. Assert your parental rights. As your child parent, you still retain all your parental rights. Removing your child from your care is based on the child's need for protection. It does not modify or revoke your parental rights. Remember that. Don't ever sign nothing that talks about, don't sign nothing with them, period. If your parental rights is ever taken, the court will have to clearly let you know it's taken. But don't ever sign nothing with them because you could sign your parental rights away. Them low life motherfuckers. I had this one white lady. I knocked on her door in the projects. And when I, when I mentioned children's services, me being against them, it's like she wanted to cry. And she was talking about how they forced her to give up her parental rights. I don't believe that. But it may be true. And I, and I told her that I'm gonna email her, we gonna talk today. I doubt she's listening. But it pissed me off. All right. Now, she told me a couple of things where she admitted, she said. They didn't test her to six months after they took the children. But two weeks after they took her children, her mama died. And then six months after she said, yeah, I'm gonna smoke some weed. They stole her fucking children. All right. But let's continue. You have all the same rights you, you always did. Expect the right to have your child live in your home. This includes the right of medical records. Educational records, the right to consent to medical care and to choose the doctor your child sees, the right to decide what church your child should attend. And what type of environment he should be residing in. Generally, government agencies sometimes pretend like they have no right. Or fail to consult you before making decisions concerning your child's care. If you don't assert your parental rights, the government agency most likely will not honor them. They, you gotta let it be known. I'm the one making these decisions. I don't care if you took the child. I still make all these decisions. But you don't know that. You're like, what are they doing? What are they doing? My child, they giving them code nineteen child. What are they doing? You have the right to know all of that. When your child is placed in state care, you should send a letter preserving your parental rights and outline the type of care you want for your child to receive. The sample letter is on page thirty-three. Let's go to page thirty-three real quick. Let me see, what page is this? Thirty-one. Preservation of parental rights. Dear government, this letter informs me that I am traditional and legal parent of the name. My parents' rights have not been terminated. As a child legal parent, I wish to continue making all decisions pursuant to the rearing and upbringing of my child. I have not, nor do I intend to forfeit any legal right for it to my, as a parent. I wish to be consulted and given the opportunity to consent to all medical care for my, my child needs, my child physician. All my child's medical needs should be handled through them. I desire to follow in care for my child. Religious upbringing and non-smoking. This should be very detailed but reasonable. If the child has IEP or other education needs. Be sure to list those and request your direct participation in any modification of that plan. All right. Hey, so we see that medical records belonging to the, uh. Let's go with the medical records. Sometimes medical providers wrongfully believe that you, if your children. Let me, if your children are in state care, you do not have any parental rights because this false assumption. They will withhold medical records or refuse to speak with you about your child's care. The medical provider has made a report against, and let's continue. You or is alleging abuse, he may be very reluctant to turn over records pertaining to your child, knowing these records might also incriminate him. However, the records belong to you. As your child legal parent, the medical provider is simply a custodian of those records. This is why you need to sign a release form before the records can be sent to, to another doctor or given to the state agent. In rare circumstances, medical records may be withheld as part of a criminal investigation. In this case, the court order is required to withhold records. So the only way they can withhold record is they actually got something from the court saying they can, they can withhold medical records. Or even educational records. That's the only way. They gotta go through court and then a judge gotta say something to you and that's how they do it. Other than that, you got control of all the medical records, period. If you don't have any luck in getting the records yourselves, you can pay an attorney a small fee or write a letter for you. The attorney should be representing you, shouldn't be representing you. Just drafting a letter. You just want them to pay them, you know, draft a letter for a hundred dollar, you know, whatever, fifty dollar, draft a letter. For some reason, doctors tend to respond better to letters from attorneys than letters from parents. We suggest that you send a letter. To your child's medical provider to preserve the clarity of your parental rights. The letter is on page thirty-four. So we got these different letters letting it be known. The medical provider needs your consent prior to treating your child. They need your consent, period. Them doctors, fuck them if they don't have your consent. This is true, even if your child is in state care, even if your child, you know what I mean, and they stole your children. You stay, still didn't let you know everything. Be all in they shit. Be in they grill. Be in they grill. You could, you got a right to be in they grill. Make sure you use all your rights to be all in they business, all in your baby's business. The Ninth Circuit Federal Court recently decided a case which emphasized the parental rights to govern medical care, even when the children are in state custody. All right, he go, the right to family association includes the right of parents to make important medical decisions with their children. And of the children to have those decision made by their parent rather than the state. It's in the interest of both parent and children that parents have ultimate authority to make medical decisions for their children. All right. The above case. All right. The wireless children were picked up and taken to a clinic for invasive vaginal and anal sexual abuse examination. The court held such examination even for investigative purposes unlawful when administered without parental consent or a court order. Parental's consent is always required. The Constitution ensures parents that in the absence of apparent consent, physical examination of the child may not be undertaken for investigative purposes at the behest of state officials. The state is required to notify parents and to obtain judicial approval before children are subject to investigatory physical examinations. All right. Okay, it's right here preserving the right for medical care. This letter informs me that I am a traditional legal parent of. My parent rights have not been modified or terminated. My child legal parent, I am entitled to manage medical care, consent to such care and be present to all appointment and have copy of all medical records. Okay? And they know that. They know it. They agents of foster care give, do not have the power to consent to medical care. Even if the parent refuses to give their consent, the state agent must obtain a court order for medical care. Okay? They, they don't have the right to do it. In this case, the parent have a right to go before a judge and tell their reason for not wanting to give consent. All right. So they have to go ahead, you know what I mean? And the judge gonna have to make them do it. Other than that, they don't have no consent. So I don't give consent for you to do shit. To my baby. Go to, let's, let's, let's take it to trial, bitch. Child stealing motherfuckers. All right. Um, let's continue. Unless your justice officer is determined upon notice to the parent and opportunity to be heard that grounds for such examination. Exists. Parents have a right to be present with their child during all medical examinations and appointments. This given case law, different case law. Parents have a right arising from Fourteenth Amendment liberty interest and family association to be with their child while they are receiving medical attention. Or be in their waiting room or by nearby area if there is a valid reason for excluding them while all. Or a part of medical procedure is being conducted. Children have a corresponding right to have their parents present during medical exams and appointments. That's the Fourteenth Amendment. All right. Right here, parents aren't entitled to direct child's education. You have all the same parental rights concerning your child's education that you did before he or she was placed in foster care. You got the same rights. Teachers like doctors sometimes wrongfully believe that having a child in foster care means you have no parental rights. And that's a lot of ignorant people out here. That's why I'm trying to educate. Worse, they believe the fa- the foster care inherits your parental rights. That's because they ignorant. Let them know. It's my baby. I have, still have all my rights in regard to his education. So you need to contact me whenever, if he, contact me. To preserve it and clarify your parental rights with your child's teacher. We suggest you send a letter similar to the one on the following page. And they got all the little templates for you. If you need help with the templates, I will give you the templates. Contact me. I got all my contact information. On the pamphlet. At the beginning of this video, you can see it to the left. May attend parents' teacher conferences. No other person should attend these conferences in your place, particularly not the state agent or foster care. They don't have no fucking rights to your baby. Them low life, you should have them show up though, to see what these low life motherfuckers look like. Take a picture of them. All right. If they desire to be present, it should be to observe only. The state agent only role should be to observe how you act as a parent, how you relate to your child's teacher, handle his educational need, et cetera. The state agent should not make educational recommendation as she is. They go right here, give it to the teacher. Dear teacher, as she is what? Unqualified to do so. The agent shouldn't answer questions about your child, performance or behavior. As she hasn't spent enough time with him to render an accurate opinion. The foster caregiver may have a genuine interest in the medium because it will be partially her responsibility to facilitate the environment that will help. Your child get good grades. However, the foster care should not be respective of your role as a parent and a role as temporary care provider. Any questions pertaining to goals of your child should be answered by you, the parent, and not the temporary gift, uh, child giver. But he go a little, this is what you get to the, uh, to the teachers right here. All right. The day, the teacher name, blah, they skip. Letter informing you about, blah, blah, blah. You know what I'm saying? I am entitled to direct the education, being present at all conferences and meetings, being informed of my child's progress and to have a copy of all educational records. Okay, my child is currently detained in foster care. Foster caregivers do not have parental rights. Under no circumstance should a foster caregiver be allowed to assess my child's records without my written consent or, or court order. My child education should not be discussed with a foster caregiver without me being present. Okay? Um, the agent should answer questions about, about their child performance or behavior as she hasn't spent enough time with him to render an accurate opinion. The foster caregiver may have a genuine interest in the medium because it will be partially her responsibility to facilitate the, okay, I read that, I read that. Let's continue though. Okay, this is one, this is dealing with the IEP. If the baby had the IEP, okay. Don't waive your right to a trial. I'm not gonna deal with that one today. Let's go back up. Okay. Now, I want to deal with twenty-seven and I'm gonna end it off with twenty-seven. This is a very, very, very important one. And I want to end this off like that. All right, let's go to twenty-seven. Alright, let's go to twenty-seven. I believe this is the most important one because this is the one where they get your ass without even going to court. They put all types of stuff in here and they will lie to you to your face. And I'm gonna end it, I'm gonna end it off with this part. Unless anybody wanna join in, the string yard is there. Let me see if anybody's in the queue and I apologize if they are. I don't see nobody in the queue. We gonna continue. But as I said, if you wanna join the queue, this is my last, uh, section that I'll be going over in regards to this, but this is the most important section. This right here is talking about how they will have you sign your child over without you knowing it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm here to help you. You see me. I, I have a clipboard and I'm professionally dressed and I'm talking to you in proper English. And I just want you to sign this right here. Just sign here and here. Don't read it. Don't read it. Just sign here. I'm, I'm, you know, you know, I'm for the best interest of your baby. I work for children's services. Yeah, just sign right here. Let's read this.
Alright, don't sign a safety plan or stipulation. Don't sign it with them. Alright? Let's, let's, let's read it. State agent may ask you to sign a safety plan or voluntarily agree to home visitation as a mean of either keeping your children now or having them placed back in home on a trial basis. The purpose of these programs is to gather enough evidence to build a case to take your children. Remember, states only get federal money when they put, they put your children in foster care, not when they leave them with you under a home visitation program. So they don't get no money if they lying to you talking about, you know what, if you sign this, you gonna keep your babies. You gonna have your babies with you. We just trying to help you and be gonna work with you to, no, they don't get no money that way. They don't get no money when they give it to a, a relative. That's why they wanna tell you about that. These low life motherfuckers are trying to steal your child. That's it. They're not, they're not your friend. Alright? These plans often require parents to agree not to use corporal punishment or other legal methods of child rearing. For a family that has been using corporal punishment to study and suddenly stop creates frustration and confusion and increases the likelihood that the parent will react out of anger. It also sends a message to the child that he doesn't need to obey his parents to avoid a spanking because the state agent will come out and tell them they can't spank him. If the original report had to do with problems with the child's behavior and the parent's use of discipline, this safety plan will create chaos. And that's what they do. Uh, if you go on Mr. Palmer, a woman came on there and said it live. That's exactly what happened. Said it, well, if you don't wanna let me go somewhere because you were scared of the state agent and them kids was running her over. Other tactic is to impose restrictions that are outside the parental control, such as requiring a child to do well medically. Even though the child has a diagnosis condition that will prevent this, the child illness leaves a high probability that he will be sick. Thus, the parent have no control over compliance with the safety plan and are simply counting the days until the child is removed. They say, well, you know what, they gonna put some impossible shit on their safety plan. Don't sign shit with them. Okay, make, make them have to get the judge to do a plan. With, don't sign nothing with them. In one case, the child was diagnosed with brittle bone disease and even fractured while in foster care. The parent was asked, to sign a safety plan which required the child not to have another fracture. The chances that he would refracture were very high and totally outside the parent's control. In another case, the child had a weight disorder and had gained an additional five pounds during a short foster care stay. The parent was asked to sign a safety plan which required the child to lose weight. The parents have been taking their child to doctor for years with no avail. Even foster care couldn't make the child lose weight. How could this parent be expected to control their child's weight when the doctor and the state has failed? In another case, the parent of a child with a seizure disorder was asked to sign a safety plan which required a child not to have seizure. Sometimes the plan is simply to have a child's grades improved. Yet, this is still outside the parent's control. The parent can do everything and there's power to facilitate good grades, but it's ultimately up to the child to perform. All these plans will fail and the child will end up in state custody. The fact that the parents have failed one plan gives the state grounds not to offer another plan. Thus, they will move for permanency, the termination and adoption. Safety plans are intentionally vague and therefore impossible to follow. The plan might read, parent will maintain a home appropriate for children. Well, this is subjective. You may think your, a home is excellent for children, but the agent may think that because you don't have a safety plugs in your electrical outlets, the home isn't appropriate and we stealing the children. For desperate parents, the plan might seem like an easy way to get your child home or keep him home. In the long run, however, signing a safety plan could cause your child permanently. Could cause you, your child, signing them, don't sign nothing with them. Make them fight you in court. They can't do nothing unless the judge tell them to do it. But if you sign it over, then they got your ass. Don't let them low life people take advantage of your ignorance. Alright? Bottom line, if you are not guilty of abuse or neglect, do not tolerate unwarranted government assault and don't settle by agreeing to services you don't need. If the agent believes you are guilty of abuse or neglect, make them prove it in court. And make them prove that in court. We about to go over a real something real quick before I get off of here. Yeah, this is a lot of pages. Okay, now, one thing I wanna show you is, this is children's services. Once they take your child, put them in state custody, they put them on child support. Alright, people talk about men, you need to just pay your child and you gotta be a deadbeat, but they do the same thing to women. People say, oh, yeah, you don't like the women. You wanna, no, it's the state. These low life people are trying to make a profit. They're making a profit by putting women against men in order to take these, give them for child support. Alright? Setting the stage for dysfunction. Same thing with children's services. They're trying to make a profit, but guess what? If you don't pay it, after they steal your children, they gonna freeze your bank account, suspend your driver's license, suspend professional license, imprison you. Talk to the women. Don't let them steal your child because then you'll be enslaved, wage garnishment, deny a passport. If they put it on your credit and they're gonna take all your stimmys. Alright? Um, let me just continue right here. What is that? Don't enter the com, okay? Go over here. Alright. Provide a peace of mind. This is why, this is why I'm running. Provide a peace of mind in a safe space, uniting parents and creating a network of support. We will unite parents dealing with the similar custody and child support issues. Yes, we go, we unite, we're uniting parents over here in Cincinnati. The court says I'm extreme danger to my child even though I'm a school teacher of eight years. This is what they doing to me. I'm a school teacher of eight years. I'm not a danger to nobody child, but they say I'm an extreme danger to my baby. Low life child stealing people over here in a juvenile court. They stealing my child. If I'm a danger to my baby, I don't need to be a school teacher. They don't have nothing on me. They said the way I was acting in court. And that's why I put on my pamphlet, we need to have access to all the court proceeding. And when I mean that, I mean the video camera footage. They got the video camera, the audio visual of how I was acting in court. Did this warrant you stealing my child and me not being able to see him for nine months? No, it doesn't, but it is war. It's war. You got the right father. So they say I'm striving to expose what the court hid behind closed doors. We demand court transparency through our demand camera and audio recordings of court appearances. You got a little typo. And then we gonna sponsor and host and participate in events and activity that promote nuclear family getting along and working together. Alright? Title four D, child support and title four E, children's services prey on your ignorance. Do not consent or sign anything with child support or children's services. Alright? So, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna go and see if anyone wants to chime in. I don't see anyone yet. We turn the hearts of the father to the children, family. You already know what it is. You know what I'm saying? I appreciate you coming by. What I'm gonna do, I'm gonna put this in the chat and I'm gonna, uh, and I'm gonna discuss some things real quick before I get up off of here. Uh, let me, let me, uh, copy it on the clipboard. And I'm gonna put the link to get in in the chat. I'm gonna give y'all a little, little chance to come through. If not, I'm out. You know what I'm saying? But, uh, let me, let's go back. And, um, okay. So this is what I, at the beginning, this is what I give them. I got the logo right there. It don't look all that good. It's, it's, it's scary right here. Turn the hearts of the father to the children and the hearts of the children to the father. That's, that's, that's the logo right there. You know what I'm saying? Least the almighty smite the earth with a curse. And that, and that's what's going on anyway because the fathers ain't with their children. You know, we talk about that. This fatherless children are the ones killing everybody. The ones that's in the jail the most. But that's what the juvenile court wants. They want the children to not be with their people. It's obvious. Uh, ele, court, uh, court child alienation for pay. We just went over that with children's services. They wanna make you ignorant and they wanna alienate you from your baby, take them away from you. So they can put you on child support or so they can just make funds for the state. They don't want your child being with a relative or with you. They don't make no money that way. Court video footage for all, cuz I've been denied twice. I motioned to court and I was denied twice for the video footage of me acting so bad that I'm extreme danger to my baby. I act so bad in that court that I was extreme danger. And first of all, I, I'm a whole man. I know how to control my emotions and not get upset. But they, what they're claiming, I was so out of control that I can't be around my baby and I gotta pay six sixty-four child support instead. Because first, they, after they took my, my baby from me, they added eighty-four more dollars and said, fuck me, okay? Understanding the system. We got my brothers, our brothers here. You know what I'm saying? And, uh, and right here. My mission. My mommy calling, hold up. I can't even answer that, ma. Uh, honor your mother. To provide recreational culture and social programs that will assist underprivileged parents in their pursuit to provide for their offspring. The goal is provide low income, non-residential parents with emotional confidence and legal know-how to need to reconnect with their children and become better parents. I myself is on a mission to reunite with my son Ezra. They took Ezra from me. And instead of just, you know what I'm saying, giving my child back, they want me to go and fuck them up. Okay? I can guarantee you this much. Melissa Powers will never get reelected fucking with me, taking my child away from me. I can guarantee that. Um, the, the, the service program, accompany members to magistrate hearing. We are trying, I, I've already had people accompany me to my hearings. I wanna return the favor. Let me know. I would love to see these low life motherfuckers talk shit up in that child supporter, that custody court to fathers. I would love to be there, believe me. Audio visual recording a court proceeding. We need to know how these low life motherfuckers talk to us like a dog. He wanted me to get upset in that court the way he was talking to me. Right here. Okay, so right here, we got Wednesday. This is, this is the back of the, uh, the pamphlet right here. Wednesday and Sunday on Facebook, we got the Fighting for Fatherhood group. Mostly fathers in Cincinnati, join us. YouTube is called Unity Ghost. YouTube Fighting for Fa, Fighting, Father Fighting Force. Alright, that's the email. Let me see if anybody trying to join the queue. Alright, nobody trying to join. That's cool. I don't know if I'm not pressing the right thing. It's cool. Uh, right, you can always call this number, five one three two eight five eighty-three seventy-four. I'd rather you text me, let me know who you is or whatever the case is. You know, but, uh, Instagram, Fighting for Fatherhood and Twitter, Fighting for Fatherhood. Alright? You can help me out. Uh, cuz I'm definitely trying to put out yard signs and signs and it will be used for that purpose to create yard signs and signs to expose this low life motherfucker juvenile court. They got me fucked up. Alright? Stealing children. I got too many. And if y'all want me to make one with your particular magistrate or with you holding your baby that you can't see no more. And we gonna blast the juvenile court. We could, we could, we could have them however you wanna have. If you wanna donate and have your baby and you on there, they say you wanna reunite with the baby. But juvenile court has stole your child. I would, listen, just work with me. Talk to me. We get that out there, put it on the yard sign, vote for Israel, be in the cut and we'll also have your magistrate or judge, you know what I'm saying, on that mug. Believe me, Melissa Powers. But, uh, let me, uh, go right here. So, let me see. Let me make sure. Okay. Well, I don't see nobody in the queue, so it's over with. Of course, I'm gonna give all praises and all honor and all glory to the almighty, as you already know. And, uh, we go out the same way we came in. We'll be on next on Wednesday at nine PM, where we'll be discussing the rest of this pamphlet. All praises to Yahweh. Yeah, yeah. It is what it is. It is what it do. What up, dawg? What up, dawg? Hey.